Here, Paula Kay.
Here.
Kathleen Sucklin.
Here.
Jonathan Miles. Michael Bender, here. Megan Juflis. And Dennis Tullamary Jr.
Here.
I'll see my vote for Jonathan. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to move the regular business to afternoon business. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second and a half. All those in favor? Thank you. With that, we will go right to SPR Oasis, L L C, the application. And I'm gonna turn it over to attorney, Edgar Sella.
Good evening, Edgar Sella, representing SPR Oasis, L L C. With me is Bob Ladino, who's one of the principals of SPR Oasis. And if you want, I can share the screen, illustrate a little bit more what we're doing. Alright, so SPR Oasis, we've been here a few times with you. This is the project on Spencer Plains Road, which is currently a vacant parcel. Here's an aerial of Spencer Plains Corridor. You can see, here's the intersection of Route 1 and Spencer Plains. When you come up Spencer Plains, on the east side is the big Y balls, train tracks, highway. So this is a 6.6 acre parcel of land that's been vacant since the house that was on there was torn down however many years ago. And is under contract by SPR to purchase, subject to the approval of hopefully some development plans that we're in the process of. The site plan will illustrate the general aspects of the development. There's two buildings proposed. Originally, we had three buildings proposed when we probably came to you in previous versions. So this has been scaled back, doing part to some of the wetlands comments that we've received. But this is a 20,000 square foot retail store, potentially grocery store, on the southwestern, southeastern corner of the property. And then a 2,000 square, 2,200 square foot restaurant proposed with a drive thru. So two regional type uses. The access will be off of Spencer Plains. Basically, there's one, literally, this property is subject to a non-access agreement with the state of Connecticut. Because when they came in and they built 95, it used to be flat across. But they had to start the bridge to get over 95 where this property is. So there's a non-access agreement on most of the frontage, except for where the existing driveway is. And that's where we're proposing the existing driveway. Fortunately, it lines up across from the I-95 northbound on and off ramp. So that's provides for good circulation. Enter into the site, and then you have two options. You can either head right toward the retail store or left toward the proposed restaurant. So from a planning commission perspective, this is located within your Spencer Plains gateway. It's outside of kind of the pedestrian portion of the Spencer Plains gateway. So this is a site that is available for redevelopment to grow the economy of Old Saybrook. These are going to be regional type uses, which are encouraged in the Spencer Plains gateway. So that's why we believe it is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. Easy on, easy off from the highway, but also very accessible for folks who live in town. And obviously, Westbrook, and we all are one, kind of, from a services perspective. So, you know, great spot for a little infill development. As I said, we're in front of wetlands as we speak. You can see the wetlands that were created when the bridge in 95 was constructed. And then there's a large wetland system on the eastern side. So we're working through some questions and comments with respect to the wetland development. Are confident we're gonna be able to get through that shortly. And then we're on to zoning for the proposed development. Bob, do you have anything to add?
No, we've been working on this for a little over a year now. We've taken input from the Wetlands Commission, and some from you all in earlier meetings. And we're just continuing to develop the plans to a point where we're hopeful that we should be doing in the next few months.
Any questions from the committee?
Do, is there any traffic study done for, you know, for example, if you're coming southbound on 95, and you're at the exit ramp and you're turning left to come up the bridge? It's, you know, cars come over that bridge. It's, in my opinion, it's a hazardous turn. And I, just with the additional traffic, it seems very high risk. There's also, you know, it's right across from the northbound ramp, but it's a high traffic area. It seems that warrants some type of traffic study.
Yeah, we prepared, we had a consultant prepare a traffic study. And actually, the recommendation of the traffic study, for many of the reasons you just described, includes a traffic signal. So we will be signaling the access to the driveway and the ramp, which will alleviate any of the site disents or traffic flow issues that, you know, express concern about. Since this is a state highway, it would have to be approved by the state D O T. Following your approval and the zoning commission.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned that this wasn't part of the pedestrian area. Are you planning a sidewalk in front of the property and crosswalk? How far is this from the intersection of Boston Post Road? Because the pedestrian is 1,500 feet in all directions from that intersection. I can measure. Yeah, because I did a measurement on Google Maps, and it looks like it's pretty darn close.
Yeah.
Because pedestrians are what I'm concerned. I frequently see people walking across that highway. And it's not safe.
I've done it. Yeah. When opposed to sidewalk, I would suggest a pedestrian crosswalk would be somewhat problematic because it would slow the signal down, and people could stay on one side of the street just as easily as they could the other. So, I mean, sidewalks are important to people, long as they didn't have a wetland impact. Which I don't think they do. I wouldn't have it.
Yeah, that would be in this, again, and it's taken right away.
Right.
So if that's something you want to comment to the commission on?
Yeah. It'd always subdue their approval, but sure they would.
I mean, the state would have to say whether they want to put a crosswalk. I doubt they would.
I agree. Hold on, I can maybe do the measurements so we all know while I'm here. It's, I don't want to say. Yeah, it's within, it's within, it's within, no, am I looking right properly? Yeah, it's within 1,500 feet.
So that would put it within pedestrian.
Yeah. Sidewalks would be required unless there's, the topography on this site is very complex.
Yeah, I understand, but based on that, I'd like to see a little more pedestrian friendly. Because there's no crosswalks in the design. There's no way for anyone to walk in and out of here. Even walking between the restaurants and the stores, it's not a very pedestrian. Especially with the hotel, the hotel across the street. Right, and the grocery store and the other restaurant is just right across the train track. You see a lot of traffic coming around here. And they encourage people to walk, you know, down Spencer Plains, to some neighborhoods out there too.
Due to wetlands, we are constrained on the entrance drive. Adding a sidewalk into that would be problematic. We're actually in a space that's not wetlands, two wetland pockets, and we're right up against both.
Right, and there's one on each side of the driveway, so it's gonna be challenging.
And somewhat silly because they're manmade depressions that over time became wetlands. You know, so, you know, they were made by the state when they built it. They built Spencer Plains Road over the castle right anytime.
So another question. So I had, I guess, expressed concerns previously. You know, it takes on the sense of a rest area. And I noticed, you know, it has public bathrooms. And so what are the operating hours? Is it 24 hours or?
I would not think anything on this site would be 24 hours. But we don't have, we have had many discussions with tenants, but we don't have a firm commitment. So I don't know what their policy, but assuming a retail store would probably be typical retail store hours, you know.
Right, okay. It's a term.
Yeah, and I would, you know, I guess a restaurant might ask for longer than, you know, the normal times. But I would assume it closes at 10 or 11 o'clock too.
Okay, no, I understand. Yeah, so I guess my question is, and I know I'm not a civil engineer, but I'm looking at the septic design, and it looks like it's assuming like 2,300 gallons a day or something like that. So the concern would just be what happens if like thousands of people are pulling in this place using the restrooms? It's, these rest areas get crazy.
I'm a, has been civil engineer, I'm a P E, but I don't represent the site. I hired Joe N to do all that work, so I'll take, all of the, all of the design criteria for septic systems are way overdesigned and conservative. And, you know, certainly, the health district will approve this. And I actually was involved in all the rest stops on I-95 in the old days, and did the design for those. So, and, you know, and some of them have septic systems, and, you know, the design quality is fairly similar to these. It's not so much about the number of people in a 24-hour period as it is the number of people in the septic hour to our, you know, the size of limitations. Only gonna accept so many customers and stuff. And I don't expect it would be wildly, you know, there's no Chick-fil-A proposed here. The only thing I would say would change the dynamic is it won't be a Chick-fil-A. I'd be a Chick-fil-A because that would take the whole site up. But, you know, for a typical restaurant, I just think it would be along the rep that might do a little bit more business and, I don't remember. Not exponentially more. That would be my guess. It's all anecdotal, it's all conjecture, but I've had a fair amount of experience doing this all year.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure the design Joe did meets the assumptions. I guess I'm just questioning the assumptions, because it's just pretty absurd.
Yeah, they're 150% of what they anticipate. So the state already bumps it up.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And assuming they're a franchise restaurant, you know, there's one in every other town, right? Whatever it has to be. So it's not like, like a Chick-fil-A is different because there's one here and one in North Haven. So if it were with North Chick-fil-A, you would come here 10 or 15 miles away. If it was a different restaurant, within six, seven, eight, 10 miles, there's competition or similar choices that would, you know, prevent that kind of traffic.
Yeah, it's the highway location that makes this somewhat a big draw.
And you look at Madison, not using a lot of traffic. It's got, it's got national restaurants, country donuts, Subway, McDonald's, you know, right on with highway ramps. And if you ever go by there, the traffic is extraordinary.
Do you envision here like a fast food type restaurant primarily drive thru or?
You know, we haven't gotten there. I would prefer quick casual, like kind of a nicer, I don't want to mention names, because, you know, but kind of a cut above a fast food, that is like first choice, you know. But until we get approvals, you know, we don't have anything to really pitch people. So we're kind of in discussions with several there right now.
And along those lines, I'll make one tangential comment outside the scope of perhaps the planning conservation, plan for conservation and development, which is that I do hope you spend a little more time in making a nicer building. I mean, you have an opportunity with that piece of land, with the two buildings, to really make something attractive and that Old Saybrook enjoys going to. And I hope you do that.
I mean, I think that would be important. This sort of gateway district is looking at entry point from town, so being sure that it looks.
We're on deck with the architectural. I'm sure they'll have similar thoughts.
And it's always like some people, you know, getting stuff in here. You know how many of like the trees that are existing on the road is like all gonna be like clear cut? And this is kind of a nice little woodland area now.
The, mainly because of the parking on the septic systems, it will be cleared. But it will be nestled. The wetlands will stay, remain as is. And the, all of the wooded area to the east will remain as it is. So it's certainly gonna be clear for the building, yeah, no doubt.
Any other questions? With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the referral.
Second.
Okay. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstains?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. And this is our next guest is online.
She showed up.
Good, our next item on the list is the referral from the zoning commission on fine metal cannabis. Application for special acceptance. And attorney Amy.
Suchin.
Suchin. Are you in the public?
Yeah.
Okay, we're not taking comments tonight in the public. It was just a referral. More than welcome to sit and listen, but just let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any good good, attorney? Yes. Good evening, everyone. Amy Suchin's representing the applicants before you. We were back, we were here back in the early fall, September, I think, September meeting, I think it was, with a slightly larger version of this application. We were ultimately denied by the zoning commission based on some concerns about the size of the facility. Bees to be the existing parking and slows. So what we have done in the revised application that's before you tonight is frankly mirror the medical dispensary application that was approved in 2018. That reduces the proposal from 4,000 square feet, which was the entirety of the building, to the 2,600 square feet, which was the, again, the same size as the medical dispensary approved in 2018. Obviously, with a reduction in floor area, that reduces the available, or excuse me, required parking. And based on the site, we're able to provide additional, what we think is potentially overflow parking. But some of the concerns on, as I said, on the zoning commission were just the adequacy of the parking lot. So the other component that we've also addressed is, there was a question about not only customer parking, but employee parking from the zoning commission. Though with the reduction in the sales area, sales floor, an area devoted to the dispensary, we're gonna have fewer employees. We're estimating six to eight. And so the designated parking on the plans has both adequate space for the parking lot, for the employees for the parking lot. And then based on pre-sales and designated pickup times, three sets of customers coming in. So we'll have the opportunity to ensure that there's sufficient space for parking, turnover spaces, and if somebody arrives early for a pickup spot. So those are really the extent of the changes. As you found previously, we hope you would also continue to find it consistent with your plan of conservation and development, certainly consistent with the positive referral you gave to the zoning commission in adopting the regulation to allow the dispensary use at this location in the process. And that's it. Happy to walk through any other details about the revisions to the applications or, you know, questions about operations, et cetera.
So I do have a question about the applications. So this is basically appointment only?
This is going to function as appointment only for pickup. So you could, what we've committed to and is in the statement of uses as a condition, is that you will place your order ahead of time, whether it's online or by phone, whatever. And at that time, you're placing the order, you're gonna have a designated, you're gonna choose a pickup time. And so what we've done to address, again, some of the questions from the zoning commission about managing the parking, is that, so for example, if you pick up the, you choose the 12 to 12, 10 pickup spot, you have that time, you come in. I think we may have explained during the last hearing, our customer turnover time. Because basically, with everything pre-ordered and pre-packaged, you're just coming in, paying, and then leaving. Expectation is that it's about a three to five minute timeframe. So the 10-minute pickup windows that we've allocated, we've also limited in the conditions the number of pickup windows in each time to ensure that that parking is sufficient. So then you would come in, pick up your order, and then to park regulations, state regulations prohibiting in connoitering on the site, and that's something that we very strictly enforce. So that would be the sort of operational.
And in your calculations of how many appointments you're gonna take during a period, does that account for people that are gonna go there not knowing it's appointment only?
So if you show up without appointment, without an appointment, and come to the door, there's a greeter who is at the door and will explain to you, we are pre-sales only, and therefore, we need to, you know, go find, go place an order. And then you can come to your designated pickup spot, pickup time. So somebody wouldn't be able to, there were, I think, some questions about whether you could theoretically place an order from the parking lot. The likelihood of that happening is really slim because the lead time of getting, you know, appointments available, particularly given that we're limiting the number of time slots we, I guess it's theoretically. Somebody could do that, but operationally, we don't really see that being a concern because we do expect that, particularly when we have, if it's a Tuesday morning at 11 o'clock, that might be different certainly than a, you know, Saturday afternoon at 2:00. And we certainly, I think, as we explained last time, expect the weekends, Friday and Saturday, to be the busiest times. So we would expect that most of those pickup slots would be reserved. And the greeter would direct somebody to place an online order and come back if they're available time slot.
During those peak pickup times, are you gonna have additional employees? Instead of just the one greeter at the store, because like, at the door, because I could see that becoming overwhelming?
Right, and so that, that was actually one of the other conditions that we had talked about with the zoning commission, that asking for a parking management plan, particularly for a grand opening. I think what is likely to happen with recreational sales starting, at least in some locations next week. We're expecting that, you know, some of the concern that the commission, that the zoning commission had expressed early on with what facilities might be open and that kind of grand opening traffic might be a little lessened by the time we get to, you know, assuming we're approved, build out the space and actually operational, we're gonna have a lot of that. But that is exactly what we envisioned with the parking management plan.
Is this the way you operate at your other locations?
This is how we operate at most of our other locations outside of Connecticut currently. Because obviously, there's no recreational sales allowed in Connecticut right now. So for example, and during the zoning public hearing, Ben Zacks talked a lot about, we see this facility being very analogous to the Fine Meadows location in Martha's Vineyard. And a lot of these operational conditions, they heard the same concerns and were exactly the kinds of things that were, you know, put into place with Martha's Vineyard. And what Ben also explained was that the, Martha's Vineyard's now been open, I think, three years. Right, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But they've, it, some of the concerns about traffic flows and that kind of thing didn't actually occur because it was, it was much more organized and manageable. And those conditions were lifted. And frankly, similarly, as we noted here, that it was a return to the, to the commission to remove those conditions with the operational data and that sort of thing to support any modifications to those conditions. So what we've outlined in the application to address all of those concerns was exactly that, that here's how we plan to manage this facility. And if we wanted to do anything different, we would need the zoning commission's approval to do that. And I think practically speaking, it may mean coming back to you again. So certainly, there would be an opportunity if that, if there were those, those issues. And I think the one, you know, sort of related question was that, how do we know that, you know, we're managing the appointment times and that sort of thing? All that data is something that needs to be submitted, you know, numbers of sales and hourly reporting is something that does need to be submitted to the state of Connecticut. So it's readily available to the zoning staff to review, to confirm that, you know, we're not, we don't have 75 appointments in an hour. We're actually operating within the terms of the conditions that have been outlawed.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so maybe you were talking on it, and I was reading, but the challenging intersection, you know, a lot of feedback from residents on that. You know, this talks about the traffic study, did a T-intersection proposal, but it's up to the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation. So do they have to review this and approve it?
Right, so what would, what actually came up is that the, there was a peer review of our traffic analysis and review done by the town's peer review consultant during the process. The intersection, while we, everyone understands that people, people's perception is that it's a problematic intersection. There's actually not a lot of, there is no reported problematic intersection data. You know, there's no reports of crashes. They might be, you know. Again, everything, everybody's experience is that it's not the best design. But there's not actually, you know, when you go to the D O T and ask for their crash history data, there are very few, I think it's maybe three over the course of the, I didn't bring the full traffic report, but there's very, there are very few crashes at the intersection. But understanding there was that perception, the traffic engineer did a design to basically turn that, what's currently a Y, into a T. And said that if that was something that would ultimately need to be approved by D O T, and again, as you heard from attorney Cusella, that's something that happens after the, after the local approval process. The concern is frankly that in the absence of crash data, D O T may not accept, you know, any reconfiguration of that intersection, if in fact they're willing to. And the town, because of, it's, it's not, the need for the change to the intersection isn't generated by our approval. We said that we would basically pay the cost of the improvement if this town of Old Saybrook wanted to go to D O T with that design. We've continued to include that as a condition of our approval, that we're happy to pay for it as soon as the town and D O T tell us that that's, that's a requirement. But, but that's, that's the background, is that it's not really part of this because it's not, you know, unlike a traffic light where you're generating traffic, and you can see the need for, you know, sightlines. Sightlines are fine at the location. Traffic volumes are not sufficient to generate a light or anything like that, which is why we made the offer, but it's not really something that's, you know, our application would require on its own.
I know we're not traffic engineers. It just feels like, you know, when you get off the highway and you're, you're going right in front of this facility, you're looking left, you're looking right, and now we're introducing people pulling out. So, you know, when people are queued up getting off the ramp, so they're gonna be, you know, there's kind of that pressure to, you know, stay behind the guy far being when he goes to the stop sign. Do you pause and it's gonna introduce some of the factors?
And that was exactly the conversation between the two traffic engineers. Our traffic engineer and the town's peer review was that everybody has, and I've been through the intersection myself on many of the occasions, you know, certainly, there's, there's that, because of its design, it sort of lends itself, and what both traffic engineers have claimed is it lends itself to rolling through the stop. It sort of lends itself um and and what both traffic engineers have planned is it lends itself to rolling through the stop sign. Because it feels like frankly, you, I think what we all think of as a yield rather than a true stop sign and. You know, so arguably isn't a question of enforcing the stop sign and, you know, people start to get into the habit of stopping. Um, but. Again, like I said, the the data when they review it, it doesn't. Generate the same kind of need like, you know, you heard in the the prior application where. X number of cars generates the need for a traffic light or um poor sightlines might generate the need for a traffic light. None of that um. You know, even the reconfiguration of the intersection um. Isn't necessarily generated by by this development, but we we understand that the. Perception doesn't necessarily match reality, which is why we made the offer.
And I think, I mean, you make the statement in here. With sales starting next week in Bramford and Monville, that's gonna take the pressure off as being so new. It all there.
Right.
But that's just my opinion.
And and I will, you know, to that end, because I think that was again, some of the questions that um came up. The sales that start next week are the converted. Um, hybrid former medical facilities that are also offering um adult use sales. We expect that there will be other additional recreational only locations that also start to open. Um, once the state allows that, for example, Fine Fettle has approval in Manchester. Um, is much further along in the build out process there. So, you know, obviously that's a little geographically further away. But there are certainly other locations that have been um discussed and um, you know, in the pipeline for. Um, in for potential recreational sales beyond just those that are starting next week.
Other questions? Uh, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the referral. Now we move forward with the Fine Fettle application for special use.
My second.
Cue. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Abstained? Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Go on to regular business. Um. Get a motion to accept a minutes as presented.
I'll just make a comment for the rest of the team.
Okay.
Um. So the motion for the favorable recommendation of the max's place. With that motion was a recommendation to remove the entry and exit points on Spencer Plain Road. But we found out that. This did not go to zoning. They pulled it back, right? So it's a moot point now. If they, when they come back, they'll come through us again. And my guess is they won't have that entry and exit point. Um.
More than likely.
Yeah, so. So I think with that, I'll make a motion to approve the referral. Thank you.
Can I get a second?
My second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstains? Thank you. Any correspondence?
None.
Okay. Um.
I have a committee report?
Yep, I have one other thing on the regular business and then we'll go on to the committee. Okay, thank you. That's all right. Um, they slipped this one in on the election of officers.
I think we did that.
Already?
Yeah.
It's January.
It's like we just did it.
It's January, yeah. Leave it or not. Um, so. We should go to the list.
There's a few ways to do it. You can do it individually or you can do it as a slate.
Okay. I'm with this. It's out. Um. Is there any changes to the current slate? Anyone wants to make? Make a motion that we continue with the current slate?
And then just read out what which person.
Norman Nick Privos is chairman. Douglas S. McCr- S. McCracken is vice chairman and Paula S. Kay is secretary. Do you need a motion for that? I need a motion to that.
Yeah.
I will make a motion. As you just stated. Thank you. Can I get a second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstains? Okay.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. No, it's all good. It's all good. So. The next thing as far as committees go, um Dennis, Lynette. Um, working in the planers department and Sarah and Chris met this week to discuss outreach for the plan of conservation and development. Uh, which is part of Sustainable Connecticut, Sustainable CT. Dennis is uh our sustainable CT liaison because he finished all the required classes. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And with that, I am gonna turn it over to Dennis. Uh, they're gonna do a survey and I'll let Dennis talk.
All right, I had some details. Thank you for uh such a thorough introduction. I'm not sure I even had it that organized in my thoughts.
No.
Um, we had it, right? We had an excellent uh conversation regarding, it it was all around surveying the public about the. Uh, about the planning process and and the interests of the public in in what I think was most um. You know, beneficial about the conversation and it being kind of a sustainable uh CT focused conversation. Was that how can we make sure to be as inclusive as possible uh in this outreach? Um, so we talked about things uh having the survey in both English and Spanish. Uh, which we have a draft of both already. Um, getting it out both electronically and in hard copy. So available uh for people to to fill out by hand, by phone, uh by computer. Um, working with a number of different um. Uh, institutions within the town, whether it's uh the schools to get it out to the families, youth and family services, the library. Uh, uh, having uh an article in the Harvard News to let people know.
Shoreline um food pantry.
Big Shoreline Food Pantry, absolutely. Um, maybe even uh uh putting some out. Um, at places like the train station or the supermarket. Um, so I thought it was uh all the senior center, of course, there'll be a QR code. Access for uh, I suppose, bring young people into the into the process. Um, all of the questions were really excellent. Uh, they they definitely represented the the. Wide range of topics we discuss here. And uh, in addition to having multiple choice answers, if someone wants to go through it quickly. Uh, we were able to add uh kind of an other option for free form comment as well. So if uh someone's really interested, really has some detailed ideas. Um, I think it's gonna be a good a a good survey.
Okay. Do you want to add anything?
No, I'm just really intrigued to see what comes out with the other.
Yeah.
Whereas we talked about that a lot of making the questions not so specific.
Right.
Um, and letting kind of the other. Be an area where we can see things pop out of what people really are thinking, not what they're prompted.
Right. So and what we'll do is we'll make sure that the rest of the commission sees the questions uh before this goes out.
Yes, um, I will say I'm gonna be in the office tomorrow so I can send everybody. Um, the. Our rough, I mean, it's pretty much a final draft, but yeah, if you have any uh input. Um, or in, yeah, you can start taking self-service monkey. So it's pretty easy just to click away.
Okay. Any questions for like any one section or just the whole plan is what we're surveying?
Yeah.
So the objective.
It's really just uh requesting, as I understood it, requesting input to the plan. It covers everything from. Um, what do you want to see for infrastructure, from sidewalks to road improvements? Uh, what do you want to see for economic development? You know, is it Main Street? Is it outside Main Street? Um. You know, just all those, the the different things, you know, the really the full range of things we we touch on.
Okay. And as far as the objective goes. You know, as part of being a member of Sustainable CT and maintaining our status. Um, I forgot what status we are. Silver, silver. We have to do programs like this to reach out to make sure that we are reaching. As diverse a community as possible, to make sure every voice is heard.
Yeah.
And that is the goal of this. Um. Then to give feedback and see if we missed anything.
Right. Yeah, yeah, and I would add in that, uh, I I had to know here, I thought one of the more interesting ideas, they're novel ideas. Was reaching out through the beach associations to any seasonal um residents, right? To really, you know, there's all different kinds of. Um, kind of constituencies within the town and uh and I think we hopefully hit most if not all.
But hotels in town too. Right. So I mean, it's sort of to make sure that our plan is all encompassing and not just manufactured by. Us five or six or whatever we are. That's right. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other committee? Reports? Okay. With that, I'd like a motion to adjourn.
We'll do adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any opposed? Any abstains? All those in favor? Thank you. Let's try to save.